Attorney Sullivan is here representing Mr. Barry, the owner of the theater. He'd like to make a presentation on what's been done and where we stand.
Thank you.
Good evening. For the record again, Walter Sullivan, representing the applicant, the license holder. It's been several months since we were here last entering into a voluntary suspension of the alcohol license so that various work could be done to bring the property into compliance with outstanding items from the various departments here in town. Since that time, my client has installed to the satisfaction of the fire department, a fire suppression system on the first floor. There are some outstanding fines as a result of the non-conformities that existed prior to the installation of the system. That's been resolved with the fire chief. My client is seeking a relief on the suspension just as to the first floor so that he can open the restaurant and tavern. He will not be opening the inn until he has the fire suppression system spread throughout the entire property, and that's going to require further design and installation. My client has also pursued a board of health requirements, secured a dumpster for the property. He has perfected the license that was part of the original special permit of the property to a parking license with the abutting property. He brought himself current with that, paying the back rent. It's been amended, and he's entered into other legal documents with Mr. Patel. I believe Mr. Patel has reported to the town that he's satisfied with that. He has cleaned up the property, substantially removing personal belongings that were up on the second floor. He's blocked off the second floor so that there'll be no access to it from the restaurant and bar. He's updated the electrical, I think, to the satisfaction of the town, and also any building code violations to the satisfaction of Mr. Rubel. We had a non-conformity that was detected with the liquor license wherein the property had been conveyed into a similar but not identical LLC. That has been corrected. The property is in the name of the license holder. It is insured fully, so we are in full compliance with our requirements with the town and with the state with respect to the alcohol license. We understand that the inholder license will come up for renewal in November. Substantial work has to be done to get in compliance with that, and we expect that to be done before we can get renewed. So that's really where we stand. I think that most of the department heads, if not all of them, have confirmed the condition of the property, and so we would ask the indulgence of this board that they allow our client to reopen as soon as possible so some of the summer months can be salvaged. I'd be happy to respond to any questions.
Madam Chair, if the board were to reinstate the liquor license, opening would still be subject to final inspection by the Board of Health. So they're not going to do that final inspection until you've determined that the liquor license is reinstated. It's my understanding that we've got a functioned fire alarm system in the whole building. W. H. Cheney can certainly clarify that. That was one of the primary concerns. But what we discussed as a possible realistic scenario would be to limit operations to the first floor and to the restaurant, right? And Attorney Sullivan and his client agreed that they would restrict access to the second and third floor. There would be no occupancy, no use until such time as they've met all applicable codes for people to live up there. And it's my understanding there's quite a bit of work to be done before that could happen. So the work that's been done, really, number one, it protects the building in terms of fire safety. Number two, it's been brought up to the applicable codes for the first floor restaurant operation. I know Mr. Rubel is here, W. H. Cheney. Raise your glasses.
I want to thank all the department heads for being here, and I'd like to bring this to the board. Do we have any questions or feedback?
So the liquor liability insurance is all set? It's back in place?
Yeah, so the insurance is up to date, it's compliant by putting the property, and I reported the deed today-
Into the name of the original. He is fully covered.
And we're good with our suppliers, we're good with the vendors?
I'm sorry, what's that?
We're good with the alcohol vendors and suppliers?
Oh, does he have, yeah, he has distributorship agreements, yes. And he has four vendors that will supply him with alcohol. They want to see a copy of his license. My client surrendered it without making a copy, so once he gets it back, he'll send that to him, and he will be supplied by the distributorship, yes.
Yeah, I got a question. Will there be a signed memorandum of understanding that the top floor will not be used if we reinstate the license?
Well, we will stipulate to that here in the minutes or any document you want. He has blocked it off, and he would be in violation of a number of things here with the town if he didn't honor that, including, I think, the Board of Health would have something to say about that-
Okay.
-as well as fire.
Yep. All right. I'd be comfortable if there was a signed document by Mr. Barry.
I guess the question I have, you mentioned the fire department fines. Are we caught up on all the building permits? I guess, is there any money owed to the town at this point for anything along those lines?
It's my understanding, other than the fines with the fire department, and we've worked out an agreement, there is no monies owed by my client to the town.
Okay. Nobody is disputing that in the audience, so I'm going to take that as...
Yep.
Mr. Sullivan, there's $28,000 outstanding fines owed to the fire department. The fire department's willing to work with Mr. Barry on this, collecting $4,000 in fines, and then placing an abatement to the remaining amount so that Mr. Barry can use those funds towards a sprinkler system to get the property sprinkled. At that point, if he doesn't show substantial progress, then those fines will be, you know, collected.
Okay. All right. As long as you're good with that, then I'm good with that.
Are there any other department heads that have any comments on any of this?
I think the board's very asking. Yeah, we need to do, any work that's being done on the second, third floor needs to be permitted. Just because there are permits are pulled, it doesn't mean that we don't need inspections. We were saying the first floor on the restaurant, that's not including the cafe on the left side of the first floor. It's just the restaurant and below street level, which is the basement and the fire area, not the cafe. And the second, third floor is off limits.
Thank you. Oh, yes, please.
Yeah, just so you know, Delshaun asked me to separate the insurance out for the cafe when I sent her a copy. So when that gets, when I go in front of the board again to get that permit, she made me do that for, so I wouldn't get to serve alcohol in the cafe. So that insurance part of it has been done. So going forward, I'd come back to just get the cafe going. But that's not why we're here today. The insurance is there separate, so the alcohol is not served in the cafe. Because otherwise, the license allows the serving on the whole first floor. So we took care of that.
And if I may, I know we have the electrical inspector here. Can you share with us how, your findings on the first floor?
I did an inspection for the electrical. I'm satisfied with the work that was done by the electrician. I was tired, and we've had many times. I feel pretty comfortable with what's been done to date on the first, rest of it probably not, like second and third floor. And the other question is, I don't think there's a permanent file for the fire alarm system. I just thought as these guys started speaking, I don't think there's a closed permit on there. I haven't seen anything.
So at one point during the installation of the fire alarm, Mr. Rubel asked me to pull a permit for the electrical, for the fire alarm. I passed that information on to the fire alarm installer. So I didn't follow through with it, but I believe that would have been picked up by Tom, because Tom is the one that asked for it. But that's something that probably should be looked at, because I, to be honest with you, I know the guy, at least he told me he pulled the permit, because Tom wanted it. But I can't verify it without going down and going to the department and talking with the electrical inspector.
I may have wanted it, but the electrical inspector's in charge of electrical permit for the fire alarm system.
No, not you, Tom. Tom Heaney.
There was a fire permit pulled with the fire alarm for that alarm, but he's showing that he's an electrical permit also.
So I'm going to suggest that that's something we may be able to work out internally. A permit was pulled for the fire alarm system with the fire department. If an additional permit is required with the fire inspector, I think we can write that up. But the fire inspector, the fire alarm system was put in under the review of the fire department, right?
Correct.
I'm just curious, typically, how long they needed an electrical permit for the fire system? How long would something like that take?
Well, initially, they happened pretty quickly. You know, as long as the fire alarm company is willing to call me and involve doing inspection, and maybe issue that pretty quickly. But there hasn't been done yet.
Okay. Next thing, do we have any more? Okay. So Attorney Clifford, can you, in order for them to proceed exactly, how would you award what they're looking for?
I'm going to recommend a motion that the board reinstate the alcohol license for the first floor restaurant area only, subject to the conditions that second and third floor access be restricted. I think that's, that's really it. It's all subject to, opening is still subject to the Board of Health.
Okay. May I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
And may I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
It was, yes.
Yes, that's unanimous.
Do you want me to make a motion to close the hearing?
Yes, please.
I'll make a motion to close the hearing and return to open session.
Okay. Second, all those in favor?
Yep.
Thank you. Appreciate that. All right. Next, we have the September 13th, 2025 special election. Liza, how are you? Nice to see you.
Good to be here. Good to be here, Steve. It's my first time coming before you, so I feel that maybe, I was telling Doug that maybe my packet is a little more, like everybody else is a little more familiar with what I'm about to say, but knowing that it's your first, I probably put in too much information, but I wanted you to-
I appreciate that.
And I appreciate Michael not giving me a hard time, as he normally does when I come up here, because I really don't like coming up.
You've been up here for eight seconds. Give me a chance.
Yeah.
Don't sweep on me, Walter.
It's my least favorite activity. So I always get confused, so I have little notes for myself. I'm here because a vote by mail is required. 2020, they made some rules, you know, during COVID, and then they made some of the rules permanent. So one of them is vote by mail is required. You can opt out, but I don't think that we're going to opt out. I indicated to Doug that I would like to mirror exactly what we did in April so that there's no question as to what we're doing and what we're not doing. What I need for the board today is early voting. We're going to have a week, you'll see that I was required to give you the schedule for the early voting. So I need a motion to opt into early voting. It's going to be Wednesday to Wednesday with some Saturday hours. So if I could get a motion-
Make a motion to opt into early voting, Wednesday to Wednesday with Saturday hours.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Excellent. And then the other thing that I was making sure that I understood what the process was, is I went to Doug and I said, a town election is always for me in April, and I have strict rules that I have to abide by, like the candidates. I have to wait for them to, they have a window to withdraw their paperwork, and then I can request the ballot. So I contacted Clifford in Kenny's office, I believe I included that in your packet, indicating that I do not need to wait, that I can get the ballot as quickly as possible so that we could have absentee voting for the whole month, you know what I mean, like as long as they want, because I just want to make sure everybody has the opportunity to vote. So the fact that I can get the ballot as quickly as, you know, as I want, we can have absentee voting, and then that week of early voting, and then they can vote by mail. And then I included a copy of the questions, and then we already voted in the, to have the special election. So because I was coming before the board, I had asked if I could talk about the fact that I'm required by law to make, to send out inactive cards to people.
Oh, okay.
And there was, I thought I had a card here. Oh, here it is. So what the resident will get is this card, and then they fill it out saying, yeah, I still live in Rockland, or no, I moved out of town. And there's been a lot of confusion, and I thought, interesting, I would like to talk about it, because we are having an election. So just because you've been made inactive, doesn't mean you can't vote. It just means that you are in inactive status. And it's a lot of work on the election staff, because you have to get out of line, you have to go fill out paperwork, you have to have a license. Let's just pretend you don't have any IDs. I can't deny you, like, everybody can vote, they can get a provisional ballot. But the fact that you are now inactive means you haven't responded to your census.
Yeah.
So this woman called, really angry, well, I don't want to say really angry, just annoyed. And then she came in and said, well, I voted. I went to town meeting. This doesn't make any sense to me. And I said, great question. So I called the state, and I said, why did she get to vote and go to town meeting? He said, all that does is update their voter status. The census is the only thing that updates the census. And I thought, oh, that makes sense. So if you don't respond to the census, you're going to be inactive. I mean, I get it, you voted, so why would you be inactive? You know what I mean? Like, I get the annoyance, but it's the way it works. I don't make the rules.
I'm just curious, so if anybody did receive that, I know that there's certain timing protocol on the census, but if somebody did receive that, could they come in and still complete one with you so that you have that, or?
Yes. Yep. Yep. And just by way of reference for you guys, I sent out 8,000 census in January, and then the first Monday in June is when I'm required to send out the inactive cards. I sent out 2,800. So, and it's all processed by hand. The census is processed by hand, the cards are processed by hand, like, this little barcode is what we, we have, like a supermarket scanner, and we scan you, like, everything's processed by hand. So it's time consuming, it takes a lot of work. We license the dogs at the same time as the census go out. So I was telling Doug, like, I felt badly for the people, like, because a lot of them are like, I said, but answering your census gives the town an opportunity to get, Doug can explain it a little better-
Different ethics.
Right. Grants, et cetera, with an accurate census.
Yeah, oh, yeah. Our population count is helpful for a variety. And of course, all the rules are changing now in Washington, but in general, yes, we want to have an accurate count, because that helps us get grant funding and other kinds of financial support.
Right. So it's helpful to me so that you can vote with ease and just check in and go get your ballot without a problem, but it helps the town as well. And I thought, oh, if I'm going to be before the board, I'd like to talk about it, because it's kind of a hot topic in our office right now.
So I have a question. You sent out 2,800 of those cards to remind people. How many have you received back so far?
Oh, that's a great question. I don't know. I'll look, and I'll email you. I don't know. Interesting question. It's, I don't want to do it. I have to do it. I don't make the rules. So if they could please respond to their census and vote on September 13th.
Tiffany, sorry, if I jump in for a minute?
Please do.
I want to thank Liza for everything she presented, because she needed votes on some of the election opt-in, opt-out things. This last thing you don't need to vote on, it's really just an infomercial for the public to understand why we're doing it and why it's important, and, you know, what can happen. But one thing she said that's very important is even if, for whatever reason, your census didn't get in, and you weren't, you know, you were not on the rolls, you can still vote. What she talked about is a provisional ballot. It gets put in a separate envelope until it's ultimately determined whether, you know, you're an active voter or not. So her staff is very well trained. They know what they're doing. And then I also just wanted to quickly highlight, the two ballot questions are word for word identical to what we voted before. I confirm that with bond counsel. Question one is asking for, to raise taxes for $2 million for the new ladder truck, and that is a specific dollar amount, because there's no bonding, there's no borrowing, there's no interest. So we know the exact dollar amount that we're going to raise in taxes. Question two is the tax increase for the fire station building project. Under state law, we're not allowed to have a specific dollar amount in there, because we don't know what the final cost will be. We don't know what the interest rates will be and all the other financing fees, but we'll be limited to the amount that was appropriated at town meeting, the 20, I forgot the number now, 26.1 million. That's the principal amount. But again, with interest and financing fees, the total amount will be greater. That's why there's no dollar amount listed in question two. That's why there's no dollar amount listed in question two, that comes up often. So just wanted to highlight those two things.
Great. Thank you, and so, as of right now, we entertain the motion that was needed to be entertained tonight?
Yes.
So, with that, any more questions or concerns?
Just thank you for making sure that everyone had every opportunity to vote on these questions.
Yes.
Yeah, I, I think it's important, and I think that, um, you know, after I checked with, um, David Carroy and Clifford and Kenny, and he told me that I could order them as quickly as I, you know, I thought that was great, that we could just have them absentee vote, um, you know, because people still may, I don't know if they will be, but they still might be on summer vacation. So it'll be great.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks. I just wanna say one more thing, um, the public outreach meetings last time, be, before the ballot vote, were disimally attended, and I don't know how many people looked online, so I was gonna throw it out there, that if there's anybody that wants to get together with me and do some door knocking to, and, and people about, um, why we need a new firehouse.
Right.
That, I, I'm totally open to that.
Agreed.
So, it's a, it's a time-tested way of, of reaching out, so.
All right, thanks for listening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And then Tiffany, I had the last part of this agenda out on the postcard, can I jump into that?
Yes, please.
So, um, with your approval, I'd like to send out another bright yellow postcard to registered voters, like we've done the last couple of times. I think it's been helpful in raising awareness. So what I put in your packet, the last thing under this, uh, tab, is a draft that I put together, I just wanna see if you have any feedback. The top half of that, that's the front of the postcard, uh, just has the date and time, Saturday, September thirteenth, eight AM to six PM at the Esten Middle Schools, with a QR code to get a lot more information. Then on the back, the same thing, and, but with a few little tweaks, to try to, without getting into too much detail, because we're limited in space, you know, why we're doing this again, so right underneath where it says polls open eight AM to six PM, I put in that the Select Board has called this special election as a result of the voter approvals received at the annual town meeting in May for these projects. And then it's the same substantive overview of each of the two ballot questions, um, but I just highlighted that these were approved at the May fifth town meeting, and that's, that's why we're voting on it. I'm open to any feedback you might have, uh, sure.
Yeah, I have feedback, um, is it possible to make the postcard orange this time, so people won't get it confused, and maybe say, "Oh, this is from a few months ago," and toss it.
Sure, I think we could do any color you guys want.
Okay. Well, I'll call your department color.
Is there a consensus for that? Would you guys all like to see a different color?
Orange sounds as good as any, any others.
Yeah, I think it would be helpful, so that it would really stand out in the mail.
That's fine, and actually, one thing I was just thinking, as I was giving you the summary, the ballot questions, the way they're ordered, number one is the ladder truck, number two is the building, so maybe I should reorder the back of the card, give me a question or two, so I'll swap that.
Good catch.
Great, and then did you, I hear a consensus, but would you like a motion to approve that?
I don't, I don't need a motion, I just really wanted to make sure you guys were good with it, and to see if you had any suggested changes or anything.
That's a great idea.
Thanks for the extra effort.
Yeah, no, no problem, um, and hopefully, you know, we'll get good turnout, whatever the result is, is, but hopefully, you know, voters turn out.
Thank you. Next, we have the name ADA Park at East Water and Union Streets update. Uh, as you may recall, we previously voted at the twelve-three, two thousand twenty-four meeting, in honor of fallen firefighter William N. Mullin.
Thanks Tiffany, and, uh, just so the board knows, I think, uh, Mike Mullin, um, Junior, I suppose is his official name, will be, should be arriving any minute, just in case you had any questions for him, but I just wanted to go through what's in the plaque, because, a- as you noted Tiffany, at a prior meeting, uh, the board voted generally to name this park, uh, in honor of that fallen firefighter, which I think was a wonderful decision that you made, uh, and I've been doing a little bit more work, uh, with Mike and with Dave Taylor, and I just wanted to run through generally what we're thinking, because it's just a little bit more detail, just wanted to make sure we're all on the same page. So we're actually thinking of two plaques, the first one would be a small one, that would, uh, generally just name, uh, the park. So what's listed there under bronze plaque one, William N. Mullin Memorial Park, maybe have a small etched, uh, headshot, um, of Mr. Mullin, and then underneath it, it would say William N. Mullin, August five, nineteen twelve to September twenty-five, nineteen fifty-six, Rockland Fire Department, Line of Duty Death, Strand Theater Fire. So that would be a, a small bronze plaque placed at an appropriate location. And then we're also thinking of a second, larger bronze plaque, which would most likely be mounted either on a, you know, vertical slab of granite, or on one of the large horizontal slabs, you know, we'll figure out the right place. And it would say, uh, quote, "We, the selectmen of Rockland, wish to extend our deepest sympathy to the family of the late William N. Mullin. Mr. Mullin gave his life while fighting the deadly scourge of fire. He died in the great tradition of firefighters who, with little thought for their own safety or comfort, battled courageously against one of man's most formidable enemies. Such fearless men are heroes as much as the man who dies on the field of battle in the time of war. Mr. Mullin was a respected citizen of Rockland and a man with great devotion to his family. He had been a member of the Rockland Fire Department for nine years, where his record was exemplary. In recognition of William N. Mullin's service to this community and his supreme sacrifice, we inscribe this statement on the records of the town as a permanent record of our sympathy and deep gratitude for his unselfish act. Signed, Board of Select, eighteen fifty-six," unquote. And then underneath that, say, uh, "Dedicated with deepest respect and heartfelt gratitude, Rockland Select Board, September twenty-two twenty-five," and then underneath that, in small letters, it would say, "Supported with Rockland Community Preservation Act CPA Funds." So given that we had done quite a bit of work, kind of fleshing out more detail, I just wanted to make sure, generally, you guys were fine with this, because it's different than just saying, "Name the park." So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
I don't know, I'm fine with it, if the family is fine with it.
Yes, no, they, they are, and I,
Yeah.
I see Mike, Mike's in the back, but we've been, we've been working.
Thank you, thank you to the board and to Doug, they're working on the progress.
No, I think this is, um, basically a beautiful explanation of the tribute, um, and, um, you know, anyone who's enjoying the park will be able to then further understand, uh, the dedication, um, and, um, you know, I, I, I think this is, I think this is wonderful.
Great, so I'm not looking for a vote, I just, I wanted to make sure there weren't concerns with anything, and if we just have a consensus, we're good, we're working closely with Dave Taylor, he's on board with, with all of this as well, so I think this will turn out to be a great project. We put September, um, uh, September twenty-five, because that's when we're anticipating the ribbon-cutting would be, if it's a different month, we'll obviously change it accordingly.
Is there any other steps needed for us in terms of, um, moving everything forward for September?
Nope, no, not for this, um, with your consensus, we'll move ahead, and I'll just keep you updated when the ribbon-cutting will be, we'll be in good shape.
Fantastic, thank you.
All right. Thanks, Mike.
Next, we have collective bargaining agreements, public announcement, New England Police Benevolent Association, Inc., Local sixty-five, Police Patrol, New England Police Benevolent Association, Inc., Local one-seventy-five, Police Superior.
Thanks Tiffany, so I know the board knows this already, because we discussed this in executive session, and you, you voted to endorse these, uh, updated union contracts, but, um, as John Clifford has instructed us in the past, we're required to report out to the general public, um, so that's what we're doing tonight, so there's two contracts that we're reporting out on, Police Patrol and Police Superior. Superior are the, the sergeants and above, the, the higher-ranked officers. So to start with Patrol, you know, uh, it's a fair agreement on both sides, just the high-level big picture, it's a three-year agreement with a two-point-five percent wage increase per year, so we're, we're staying in line with, um, with our revenues and what we're able to afford. And there's some individual, you know, I was gonna say details, but it should be things about things, like paid details, uh, you know, et cetera, uniform allowance, things like that. Uh, similarly, with a, with a Superior's Union, two-point-five percent per year for a three-year agreement, and again, some additional, um, things relating to details, uniform allowance, et cetera. These types of, of negotiations are difficult, um, but I feel good about these, I think it's a, it's a fair deal on both sides, and just wanna report out properly to the public. That's all I have on that.
Thank you. Next, we have other old business not reasonably anticipated.
I have none.
Next, we have the Select Board Reorganization, now following tradition, um, each July, even though the election, uh, takes place in, uh, April, each July, um, we have a Select Board meeting where we can, um, basically vote on, uh, the Select Board Reorganization. Vice Chair Childs has worked very hard, uh, this last year, and I wanted to commend you on, uh, on all the work that you have done. And with that, I would like to make a motion, um, for Vice Chair Childs to continue serving as the Vice Chair.
Second.
Do I have a second?
Um, second.
What?
I said second.
I was, sorry, all those in, hey, you know what?
No worries.
I'll recuse myself.
I'm just, I'm just being consistent, but anyways, all those in favor? Okay, thank you. As far, and, and thank you.
Yeah, thanks for your trust, it's good.
And thank you for all the, all the hard work you've done.
Thank you for thanking me for thanking me.
Thank you. Um, and with that said, um, next we go on to Chair. Uh, it has been such an honor to serve as Chair this last year. When the opportunity presented itself, I know that, uh, the former Chair had been Chair for, for a good while, and, um, we were looking for kind of a, maybe a new perspective or whatnot, and, um, it was a wonderful occasion that I, was honored to rise to and to participate with. And, um, with that said, I now know the time, um, commitment that it does take, and, um, and I will not be seeking the Chair, um, moving forward, um, but I would like to, well, we can, we can discuss this, um, but I would like to demonstrate my, my show of support, um, for Select Board Member Olafland to take on the Chair, um, moving forward for this year. But with that said, um, if we have, um, any, any discussion or feedback from the board, I'm happy to entertain it.
Yeah, um, well, I, I just wanted to thank you, I think you did a fabulous job as Chair Tiffany, you were very open to phone calls whenever, day and night, so, and, and, yeah, and I, I think you did a great job, and I understand the time commitment as well, so, um, and, yeah, I, I believe that Mike really has, like, the strategic prowess to carry us forward with stuff that's coming up.
Thank you, and, um, like I said, i- it's been an honor, and I, I, I very much enjoyed this position. I also respect the command that Select Board Member, um, Olafland has had of this position, um, and I do feel very confident that, um, his leadership would be, um, a wonderful way to move forward with the next year.
Thank you. Tiffany, I wanna thank you too, it's, um, learned a lot under you, but watching you prior to being elected, you've done a wonderful job, um, very steady hand, and also agree, I think, uh, Select Board Member Olafland would be a wonderful choice to, uh, to retake up the helm.
Great. With that.
No, I'm just, uh, thank you, and I think Mike's a good choice, so.
So I'll make a motion to, um, elect on this board, Michael O'Laughlin, for, um, the Chair position for this coming year.
Second.
All those in favor?
Thank you guys, appreciate your support. And Tiffany, and, you know, not to, uh, you know, to steal your thunder, I, I thought you did an excellent job, you know, we talked last year about having somebody step up to take over the Chair position, you stepped up and then some, you did a great job. You definitely, uh, I mean, you found your fastball a- a- as, as you went along, and, uh, I know the first couple meetings were, were a little bit hairy, but, uh, I mean, up until, I mean, you had a, a perfect game going tonight, until you, you forgot to come out of the, uh, you know, the hearing, the public hearing, but you have John there to remind you, which is great.
I was just keeping John on his toes, you know?
But you, you, you've come, you know, such a long way, and, uh, and I look forward to continuing to work with you, and I appreciate the support of all you guys for, uh, in the past and in the future as well, so, thank you.
Thank you. Now, with that said.
Oh, you want me to take over? Okay.
You're the Chair now.
Yeah.
Have at it, have at it.
Select Board Liaison Updates and Assignments, uh, so I'm not prepared with the assignments or any liaison updates, so I'll take with that for a future meeting. However, I do want to, uh, make a motion to appoint John to the Plymouth County Advisory Committee, because that position has since been vacated by WARY. I think John, having the municipal experience that he has, I think he'd be a major impact for the town of Rockland, being our representative and our voice on that board, so.
Agreed.
Motion for John?
Thank you.
You have a second?
I'll second.
Motion for second, all those in favor? There you go, thank you.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, Town Administrator's Report and Correspondence, Doug?
Thanks, Mike.
This is weird from this spot.
I know, I know.
No, I'm good, no, there's too much, that's too much.
I wanna make one obs-, I wanna make one observation, but John, Attorney Clifford can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think if you, if you're voting a reorganization, whether, you know, a Chair, Vice Chair, or a liaison appointment, I think it's perfectly fine to vote for yourself, I don't think you have to.
Yeah, I kept my hand down, people think I'm arrogant.
It's just my own.
People think I'm arrogant enough, if I voted for myself, that just gives them everything.
If it was tied, I would've broke the tie, but I don't.
Pays the exact same, I know.
Just my two cents. Couple of quick things, uh, in my report, uh, we talked earlier about the police union contracts, we have the highway parks and, uh, fire union negotiations later this week, I'm looking forward to wrapping, uh, both of those up, hopefully, quickly. Uh, next, we have a Finance Committee meeting tomorrow night, we're just doing, uh, reviewing the year-end transfers that the town accountant has requested. Uh, next, I also met with the Parks Commissioners last night, uh, and based on that meeting, I've approved the contract with the engineer for the bicentennial track project for all the future phases, schematic design, design development, final design, construction documents, bidding, permitting through the Conservation Commission, construction oversight, soup to nuts. Um, so I'm really excited about it, and particularly, I'm happy to, happy to be working collaboratively with the Parks Commissioners and the Park Superintendent on this, it's gonna be a great project. Uh, and then lastly, I've also hired an architect to help us, uh, do the plans and specs, specifications, for when we do the public bidding for the demolition of the Lincoln School. That's gonna be a, you know, a complicated demolition, and it's obviously in the middle of the neighborhood, we wanna make sure everything is specked outright, we avoid change orders, and that everything is done in full compliance with all environmental and other types of codes, so we've engaged an architect to help us, uh, with that from an administrative end, and our plan there is hopefully to have that building, uh, completely down by the end of the fall before winter hits. And as I think I may have mentioned earlier, I have been communicating with the Historical Commission, um, so they'll have the ability to salvage any things that they think are important. And then maybe one last thing, uh, the Fire Chief, who's in the room, had a, had a great idea about potentially trying to salvage part of one or two large timbers that are still in the building, exposed and, and in good shape, to incorporate if the fire station building project gets approved. Not so much used for structure, but it just has some kind of historical aesthetic feature to have a bit of an exposed large timber from the site that was there, so we're gonna try to do that if, if we're able as well, and that's another thing the architect can help us spec out, so that's all I have.
So, so I had a, I had a follow-up to that, um, people in the neighborhood, I've talked to many of them, and they're concerned about, um, you know, like asbestos being airborne and things of that nature, um, so is there like, um, a step-by, and it's from my own knowledge too, just to know how they,
Yeah, so.
make that happen.
Sure, no, that's a great question.
Share with people.
I, I won't go into the details of it, because I, I'm not an expert in it, but there are very, very strict rules
Yeah.
and regulations
Yeah.
that the State Department of Environmental Protection has.
Yeah.
And that, to be honest, is one of the main reasons why I engaged the architect
Yeah.
to help with this, if there wasn't any materials like that, I probably wouldn't have done it. But to ensure that all those rules are spelled out, and, and also the monitoring and oversight, absolutely, I guarantee it'll be done a hundred percent appropriately. When I get to the point where the specs are done, or going out to bid, I'm happy to publicly put out some more of the detail about, you know, what, how things have to be wet down, and put into different bags, and
Yeah.
recently, and they, they ran into some issues like that, where they were hosing stuff off, putting them into bags, putting tents up and stuff like that during the process as well, so.
Yeah, yeah. So, yeah, it'll be, it will be done properly.
Yep, well, I, I have no doubt, but I, you know, they wanted to know ahead of time, I get asked that a lot, so.
Yep, and we, and, and you know, just to confirm, and we've done hazardous material studies, so we know exactly what's in the building, we know where it is. The architect has engaged the environmental consulting firm that did do the analysis as one of their subconsultants to make sure everything's identified and will be addressed properly, so we are on top of it.
All right, cool.
Thank you, Deb. Southboard comments, comments and opinions expressed by individual members do not necessarily reflect the views of the Select Board and that the opinions and comments of only the individual member. Southboard Member O'Donnell?
Thank you. Want to take a moment to acknowledge the passing of a Rockland legend, Mr. Scott McKinley. He was honored with a funeral service this morning. Mr. McKinley dedicated his life to bettering the town of Rockland and students across Massachusetts. He had shown a dedicated commitment to volunteerism throughout his life. In remembrance of Mr. McKinley, I'm once again asking citizens to volunteer to be appointed to the many openings across our various appointed boards and committees. Lately, we're seeing more departures than applications for appointments to boards and committees. If we continue to see this trend, it'll affect our town's ability, ability to do business as usual, if it impacts these committees' ability to meet a quorum. I'm asking our residents to consider applying for an appointment to any board or committee that seems interesting to them. Please feel free to call Town Hall and speak to Sue Ide, Executive Assistant to the Select Board, or the Town Clerk's Office for more information.
Steve, Southboard Member Edward?
Yeah, I guess first I'll start by congratulating Charlie Williams on his retirement after thirty-six years on the, the Rockland Fire Department. So congratulations and enjoy your well-earned retirement. And then obviously, we lost a great man. I had the, the privilege of serving with, with Scott relatively early in my municipal life, when I served with him on the Capitol Planning Committee. I, and I'm sure someone's going to rattle off his, his resume, but you know you're doing something right if you have a street name after you. And if there was a, you know, a Mount Rushmore, so to speak, of Rockland officials, he certainly would be one of the four up there. I appreciated how much dedication and commitment and how direct he was, he always knew where you stood with Scott, and I learned a great deal from him, so, you know, I echo what Steve just said, we need people, even if you can be a tenth of what Scott was, you'd be doing one hell of a job, because I know that I'll never be even close to what he brought to, brought to Rockland, but that shouldn't stop people from wanting to at least, you know, do something, so rest in peace, Scott, thank you.
Thank you, John. Southboard Member Edum?
Basically, thank you for that beautiful tribute, I, I, John, I don't feel the need to duplicate, but, but Rockland did lose a very, very prominent leader. I just want to take my opportunity to, this is our only July meeting, and that I hope everyone has a safe and healthy month, and I'll look forward to seeing everyone in, in August.
Thank you, Tiffany. Vice Chair Childs?
Yeah, rest in peace, Mr. McKinley. You're a mentor to a lot of people and I'm sorry, we lost one of yours, John. And to honor him, I, I also agree with Steve, be of service, you know, that's how we make this town better and enjoyable for everybody is, is when you step up, so. And congratulations, Charlie, on a outstanding career. And I also wanted to put a save the date out there for August twenty-second, we're having the WR Piestavel that night at Players, and Inverter, which is this amazing metal band, is going to be playing there, so just wanted to put that out there.
Thank you, Ward.
You're welcome.
So I'll echo pretty much what everybody else said, you know, this morning, the town paid a nice tribute, veterans stood out, along with some kids that were over at the camp, holding American flags at the Veterans Monument as Scott McKinley, his car went by, then a bunch of teachers were out in front of the high school on McKinley Way, about thirty or forty of them, along with administrative staff, and then Doug, I want to thank you for having everybody here at Town Hall stand out in front as well to pay tribute. So, you know, John, you said it, as far as him being on Mount Rushmore for the town of Rockland, he absolutely is up there. You know, I first, I first knew Scott McKinley as my, my high school principal, and he was, he was as intimidating as a guy when he walked the hallway, he, he had a command presence like no one you'll ever, you'll ever meet. I had the, the privilege of volunteering for an event that we used to carry out called the Thanksgiving for the Elderly, we used to do it at the Old Sons of Italy here in town, and as a freshman in high school, I stood in the back room in the kitchen with Scott McKinley, just tearing turkeys apart and putting them on plates for, for the seniors, and you saw a real personality and just somebody that really, for me, you know, showed me the value in, in volunteerism and giving back to the community. But an extremely, extremely funny guy if you got to know him in that manner, which, you know, as a principal, like I said, he was, I think Scott Duffy can probably attest to this, he was a pretty intimidating one, you know, walking through the halls. But John, yeah, I will go through a little bit of his resume, he was obviously a veteran as well, he created the Youth Commission, which is what we now know as the Rec Center, the Rec Department. He created the Rockland Education Foundation, which does countless work and raises a lot of money for, for the teachers within our school to spend on extra things within, in, within the classroom for the students, and he's one of the founding members of the Capitol Planning Committee, and he's done so much for this town that, you know, there will never be another Scott McKinley, but just a, a very, very nice and decent human being that, that the town, the town lost, so. And with that said, I appreciate all, all the stuff that was done, all the different departments that came together to pay tribute, as well as the Police Honor Guard pulled it together at the last minute for us as well. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn and to enter into executive session per Mass General Law, Chapter Sixty, Section Sixty-four A, to consider the retention of sale of real property after tax closure, twelve London Street, and per Mass General Law, Chapter Thirty-A, Section Eighty-three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with unions, clerical highway, parks, and fire. Thank you, Edward, good night. Motion to adjourn.
A little rusty.
Yeah, yeah, it's been a while.
Motion.
Motion, Edward, a second?
Second.
Motion and second, all those in favor? Thank you.
Thank you, good night.